Good evening. I am calling the St. Louis County Council meeting to order Tuesday, July 13th, 2021. The hour is 6:30. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic from the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Chair, will you call the roll, please? Councilmember Daze.
Here.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Present.
Councilmember Fitch.
Here.
Councilmember Webb.
Present.
Councilmember Clancy.
Here.
Councilmember Trachus.
Present.
Councilmember Harder.
Present.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum. Thank you very much. The order of voting this evening is A. Daze, Dunaway, Fitch, Webb, Clancy, Trachus, and Harder. Is there a motion for approval of the Journal of the Meeting of June 29, 2021?
So moved.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Thank you. Motion carries. The Journal of June 29, 2021 is approved. A motion to suspend the rules is in order for the adoption and presentation of a resolution honoring Susan Rollins for her years of service to St. Louis County. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The rules are suspended. Kevin, would you please read the resolution?
Yes, Madam Chair. Resolution Number 1 this evening introduced by Councilmembers Daze, Fitch, and Webb. Resolution: Whereas Susan Rollins earned her Bachelor's of Arts in Philosophy from Wellesley College and a Master's Degree in Business Administration from New York University, and whereas during her professional career, Ms. Rollins held several executive positions in the financial industry, and whereas twice served in assistant dean positions at Washington University in St. Louis, and whereas in 2008, Ms. Rollins was appointed the Executive Director of the St. Louis County Housing Authority, the Authority, and throughout her tenure, she was a passionate advocate for the people the Authority serves while also navigating a myriad of challenges, and whereas Ms. Rollins was the longest-serving director of the St. Louis County Housing Authority, serving 13 years and under three county executives, and whereas Ms. Rollins was the first female and African-American female to serve as Director of the St. Louis County Housing Authority, and whereas Ms. Rollins' commitment to her duties earned the respect of colleagues at every level, and whereas despite her busy professional schedule, Ms. Rollins has found time to pursue her other passions, including dancing, cycling, and supporting awareness of Alzheimer's disease, and even recently stepped outside of her comfort zone to do a little modeling, and whereas above all else, Ms. Rollins is a devoted mother and inspirational role model to her three children, Allison, a nationally renowned poet, Chandler, a Director of Public Relations for a national beauty company, and Ava, a human resources professional for a major residential treatment center in St. Louis, and whereas Ms. Rollins retired from her position with the Authority at the end of 2020, and whereas when a woman has devoted such a significant portion of her life to public service and contributed so much to the betterment of our community, it is appropriate for the Council and all St. Louis Countyans to pause and take note. Now therefore be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section 1, "The County Council expresses its deepest gratitude to Susan Rollins for her years of dedicated and professional service to the people of St. Louis County and wishes her the very best in all her future endeavors and many happy years of time spent with family and friends. Section 2, 'The Administrative Director shall send a certified copy of this resolution to Ms. Susan Rollins as a permanent token of the Council's gratitude and esteem.'"
Thank you very much, Kevin. I move for adoption of Resolution Number 1. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please. Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Trachus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Resolution Number 1, there are seven ayes. Thank you very much. Resolution Number 1 is adopted. At this time, would Susan Rollins please come forward?
I always feel that Day is like an opportunity to and no one in your continue on different days as elect something I said or some of the life under into that. That's how long we bind in a second. How in a long time ago? And she did every other she those are two close friend lived in me everything that I've done in my life so I want to recognize people and not that I keep this is a new and recently also to be recognized. So I feel that we I want to thank my buddy that I've worked on one we got it. I want to thank in the corner of the room was New York little crayons and whatever it was, you were so gracious. Many of you said, I remember other crayons. Remember you that triggers the but remembering thank you so
All right. We have no bid openings this evening, so we will move to communications.
Madam Chair, we have no tax compromises, zoning matters, or road and bridge matters this evening, so we will move to other communications. Under Other Communications, Item Number 1.
Receive and file same motion to Item Number 4, and that will be the order. Item Number 5. Receive, file, and the County Council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. The same motion will apply through Item Number 7. Item Number 8, 6th District.
Receive and file.
So ordered. Item Number 9. Receive and file, and that will be the order. Item Number 10. Receive, file, and the issuance of a request for proposal be approved as requested. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Item Number 11.
Receive, file, and the appropriation transfer be approved as requested. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Item Number 12, 2nd, 3rd, 4th, 5th, and 6th Districts.
Receive and file, same motion through Item Number 13.
So ordered.
Item Number 14, 1st District.
Receive, file, and the change of owner be approved as requested. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item Number 15, 4th District.
Receive, file, and the change of managing officer be approved as requested. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Item Number 16, 4th District.
Receive and file, and hold on the order of business. So ordered.
Item Number 17, 4th District.
Receive and file, and hold on the order of business. So ordered.
Item Number 18, 6th District.
Receive, file, and the change of managing officer be approved as requested.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries.
Item Number 19, 6th District.
Receive, file, and the change of managing officer be approved as requested.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Please say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Item Number 20, 6th District.
Receive, file, and hold on the order of business, please.
So ordered.
Item Number 21.
Receive, file, and the County Council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item Number 22, 6th District.
Receive, file, and the County Council be requested to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item Number 23.
Receive, file, and the County Council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion through Item Number 25, and that will be the order.
Item Number 26, 7th District.
Receive, file, and the County Council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item Number 27, 1st and 2nd Districts.
Receive, file, and the County Councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion for Item Number 28.
So ordered.
Item Number 29, 3rd and 7th Districts.
Receive, file, and the County Council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item Number 30, 4th District.
Receive, file, and the County Council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion for Items through Item Number 31. So ordered.
Item Number 32, 4th District.
I'm sorry, my screen just... It's okay. We've kept your time. Okay. My screen froze. Okay. Item Number 30. I think we're on 32. Receive, file, and refer to the Council as a committee of the whole. So ordered.
Item Number 33, 6th District.
Receive and file.
So ordered.
Item Number 34.
Receive, file, hold on the order of business, and refer to the Council as a committee of the whole, and that will be the order.
Moving to add-ons. Item Number 1, 1st District.
Receive, file, and the County Council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion for Item Number 2, and that will be the order.
Item Number 3, 4th District.
Receive, file, and the County Council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion through Items Number 6. So ordered. Right now before we have the public forum, several people have asked that they come and give a tribute, if you will, to our County Councilwoman Hazel Erby, and we will do that at this time, and of course, if there are any members of the Council that would like to do that as well, they may do that, and then we will move immediately into the public forum. So at this time, when you come, just give your name and proceed with your testimony.
County Executive Page and Madam Chairman and members of the Council, I'm Rick Stream, and I thank you for this opportunity to say a few comments about our friend Hazel Erby. I met Hazel for the first time seven years ago in August of 2014, two weeks after I won the Republican nomination for County Executive. A mutual friend brought us together for lunch at a restaurant on Del Mar in her district. We had a very nice conversation. She asked short questions, and I gave longer answers. After all, she wanted to know more about me. Toward the end of our conversation, in her quiet manner, she said, and I quote, "You know, Rick, we don't do Republican in my district," unquote. I nodded and said, "I understand, but do you think you could do Rick Stream?" She laughed and said she would think about it. Well, we know what happened. Hazel formed the Fannie Lou Hamer Organization, which did endorse me and worked for me. On election night, she was there with her friends at my watch party, after leading through most of the night, when the final precincts came in, and I lost by six tenths of a percent. In my concession speech, I recognized Hazel, harking back 50 years before when I was in high school and read John F. Kennedy's book, Profiles in Courage. I said that Hazel clearly was a profile in political courage for going against her party and supporting me. Hazel and I had many conversations after that election, usually about how God had plans for us that were different from our plans. Her integrity, respect, and fairness always showed through. When her health problems began, her Christian faith was very apparent, and I have no doubt that someday in the future, she and I will continue our conversations. I have been blessed throughout my life that God surrounded me with wonderful people, all of whom helped me be a better person than I would have been without them. Hazel Erby is at the top of that list, and for that, I am eternally grateful. Thank you.
Thank you.
To our Honorable Counsel, Madam Chairwoman, County Executive, I'm here for a short testimony on who Hazel Erby is. I want to start off with a person by the name of Beth Randalls. Our Republicans would know who that is. Some of you guys won't. Is a lawyer out of Kansas City, grew up in Sikeston. And when I looked on my social media page, she was giving a testimony to Hazel Erby. Now, if you live in St. Louis County and you want to do anything, your FICA score is to talk with Hazel Erby, because the question they're going to ask you is, have you checked with Hazel? I don't care if you want to run for the highest office of this county, or you want to get more trash cans at the park, Hazel was the go-to lady. I don't know, and this is a testimonial, I don't know where I would be in my life of trying to change the community without Hazel. The courage of the woman, it wasn't about wins for her, and I just want to make sure the Council understood this. It wasn't about Hazel winning. Every every situation, and I've been through many with Hazel, it was always at the end what was best for the residents. If she felt like supporting Rick Stream was what's best for the residents that day, she was a staunch Democrat, but she had the courage to do what she thought was necessary. The same Fannie Lou Hamer Organization endorsed me last election, just because she wanted the focus on North County. There's two things that I want to express to the Council. First, the Council and you guys going forward. We've had a very contentious relationship over the last few years in St. Louis County. We all can agree on that. But you guys are all the winners and the elected officials to represent your districts and the county, and I accept that. What Hazel would want from all of us is to just get it done. Whenever the conflict of, "I don't like this person," or this, or that, or the political stuff, I mean, I've seen people in the Democrat Party and the Republican Party not work with each other as well as Hazel did. You guys are familiar with Colleen Wassinger, one of her good friends. Little secret is, when I needed something done, me and Colleen didn't always see eye to eye, I'd go to Hazel, a black Democrat woman from University City that helped the Republican Party, because whatever the issue was, is what it was. The second thing is for the community. We are in some very tough times locally, statewide, and as a country. And Hazel Erby is the, was the ambassador, and will remain the ambassador of North County. I just could not ever fathom how this woman worked so hard. I remember before the last election, I had something I was trying to get done, and I told Hazel, "Nobody's going to help me because I'm running for office." Right? I says, "This has to get done." Hazel tells me on a Sunday morning, "Well, meet me in Chesterfield in Snokes," and I said, "What are you doing in Chesterfield?" She says, "None of your business." But, you know, Hazel and I have always had this auntie-nephew type of relationship. When our current prosecuting attorney runs against Hazel, usually that's a death sentence, as you guys know, for future support. Chairwoman Daze, what did she do? Did she, did it even stop her step? And I even asked Hazel about this, and she says, "It's what's best for St. Louis County." Now, she had a lot of focus in North County, but I want everybody to understand, this Council, my conversations with Mrs. Erby, it wasn't just limited to the 1st District, or even the 1st and the 4th District. She cares about what's going on in South County, because, like she said, the business owners in South County are the people, they're hiring people in North County. She just had a way of breaking things down and making me a better man. And your first speaker, from the beginning of her political career to newer guys like me, Congress, excuse me, Chairwoman Daze and myself participated in a balloon race over a couple days, and those same young activists, you know what she told me last year? She says, "You look out for them." And that says, "Why?" Because I'm running an election. She says, "'Cause there are future, just like you were." It clicked. I say all this just to bring it to this point. It is imperative for St. Louis County to enshrine Hazel Erby's work ethic, belief system. Honest to God, she works better with people in different parties, of different races, of different sects, and all of us should try to follow in her footsteps. It's not about the political wins. We can do that in that arena, but when we're here, it's the business of the people. And if you see me come before this Council, I will always take that attitude as a citizen, and I hope you guys take that as a Councilmen and Councilwomen. In closing, it's important to be able to teach the next generation on who Hazel Erby is. We are, and again, in tumultuous times across this country, across this state, across this county, and I believe that there are three actions that this Honorable Counsel can consider to allow me as a father, and in 15 years as a grandfather, to be reminded that I need to remind my children what Hazel Erby was about. Number 1, Hazel Erby to U-City has protected and developed that area, I mean, ever since I was in short pants. And there is a portion of Olive Boulevard that is east of 170 to the city limits. I believe the Council should consider renaming Olive Boulevard in that area Hazel Erby Boulevard. Why would we do that? Because we need the reminder of, when my kid asks me, "Well, who's Hazel Erby?" I need to be reminded that I need to teach that, and I know better. So we all do. Something I just want the Council to consider. I've looked into this. I've talked to the business owners. They're supportive of it, and I only speak for myself, I speak for them. The second thing, when I look at who Hazel Erby was and is, is that she just was a phenomenal family member. It wasn't just about the politics in the Council. You want to know a testimony on Hazel Erby? Talk to her kids, talk to her grandkids, talk to her nieces and nephews. One of Hazel, and this is a little secret, one of Hazel's children married one of my relatives, that's how I got to know her, you know? And I think that North County needs something to rally around. So I proposed to the St. Louis County Council to rename Spanish Lake Park Hazel Erby Park. And if you do such, I will personally lead a team that will go there once a month and make sure that we're picking up the trash, and there's hundreds of people that will follow me on that. Give us an opportunity to create some pride in our community. This isn't about the political back and forth. She's gone now, guys. So we need to really look at who she was, and not about the wins and losses. The last thing is, and I just spoke with Parson a few hours ago, he just signed a bill that was put up by the Republican House and Senate in the General Assembly to make September 22 Hazel Erby Day, and that bill was just signed a few hours ago. I think St. Louis County should follow suit without haste. Thank you for the opportunity to address this Council, and I cannot reiterate how important it is at this time in our country to honor a woman that at one time worked with you all. Thank you, and God bless.
Anyone on the Council? Okay. All right. If none others in the... I'm sorry, Councilman Fitch?
If I could just add, I met Mrs. Erby in 2009 when I became the Police Chief. She's one of the first people I came over here to visit, to say if there's anything I could do to help you, and I soon learned, as a department head, that if I can go to Hazel and get her support on whatever it is I needed, she could get the rest of the Council together to do that. So I will always appreciate her openness, and she'd tell me right up front, "No, I can't support that, and I can live with that. I'm good with that." So it was a pleasure to be able to work with her, and it's a sad moment to see her pass. Thank you, madam. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Trakus?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hazel Irby was a dear friend. I got to know her well over several years working with her. I've said it before, I'll say it again, and I'll always say it. Hazel Irby was and will always be the conscience of this counsel. There were times when Hazel came to me and asked me to intercede between disagreeing groups on the counsel or disagreeing interest groups on a piece of legislation. Most notable, her legislation for minority and women-owned businesses. I was flattered and humbled by her request to do so. And we got it done. To Mr. Berry's point, Hazel was good at finding ways to get things done. We didn't always agree. There were times when we didn't agree. And I can tell you that at those times Hazel always proved to be the greatest of adversaries, and that is the worthy opponent. Not many reach that level. She will be missed, and her absence on this body is clearly evident, as Mr. Berry alluded to. So Godspeed, Hazel. I will miss you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, thank you. Well, this week, you know that we lost two giants, and that is Hazel Irby as well as Betty Thompson. And there will be a resolution later on for Hazel. And then next week, we will have one for Betty Thompson. Betty Thompson also worked for St. Louis County for a number of years. So they will be missed. It's been a rough week for me.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would like to say a few words about Councilwoman Irby, if I can. I remember I first met Hazel when I was campaigning for this position. And she was kind enough and gracious enough to give me some of her time. I believe we met at the Starbucks on North and South in Delmar, which I'm sure many of other people have met with her at that location too. And, you know, I was talking to her about my kiddo at the time, my older kiddo. And I was talking to her about my other job. And I was saying, I could do this job and still work full-time at, you know, the place I was working. And she laughed in my face. And I think that that is, you know, a testament to how dedicated she was to St. Louis County, how seriously she took this work. And I think she always had what's best for St. Louis County in mind. Through my experiences with her on the counsel, she was a great colleague. And it was an honor to work with her, even though it was for a short time. So my thoughts are with her family and friends and loved ones, which I know are here in St. Louis and beyond. And she certainly made her mark on us for the better. And again, I offer my condolences and sympathy to those closest to her. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to public forum. How many speakers do we have this evening?
We have 15 speakers remaining this evening, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. When your name is called, please come forward. State your first and last name and your ZIP code for the record. There is a timer that will appear to give you an idea of where you are within your three minutes. And so with that, would you call the first speaker?
Yes, ma'am. Our first speaker this evening is Lou Hannibal, followed by Jason Moore.
My name is Lou Hannibal. My ZIP code is 63033. And my question goes around the complex, the recreation complex that Mr. Sullivan brought up, that we were promised to have in North County, but they haven't even picked out the space. Now, in the meantime, we have a pretty nice recreation center up here on Redmond Road. Is there any way that we can bring people from these areas that aren't served up there in a bus or anything like that? Because we have a nice golf course, we've got a clubhouse, rooms to rent, a swimming pool, indoor basketball, tennis courts, one football field, and I believe we've got one baseball field. And is there any way the county could encourage or get people, church buses or anything else, to bring people from these underserved areas, welts and so forth, up to the center there on Redmond Road?
Well, we don't generally enter, ask questions or answer questions at this time. But let me just say that that is a possibility. But we're looking at some other things as well.
Has any money been allocated yet for these yet-to-be-chosen recreation centers? No money's allocated?
No, not yet.
Okay. All right, that answers it.
All right. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jason Moore, followed by April Lenenbauer.
Hello, good evening. Jason Moore, 63021. First, my thoughts and prayers are with you and Ms. Thompson and Ms. Irby. So God bless and Godspeed. In relation to, I just got word that there's going to be a new mask mandate or there's going to be a new requirement or recommendation. Hence, I'm sure Mr. Page is masked over his face right now. So I thought I downloaded a new document that I just found today from the American Journal of Therapeutics, titled, "Review of the Emerging Evidence Demonstrating the Efficacy of Ivermectin in the Prophylaxis and Treatment of COVID-19." The conclusion of it was meta-analysis based on 18 randomized controlled treatment trials of ivermectin and COVID-19 have found large statistically significant reductions in mortality, time of clinical recovery, and time of viral clearance. Furthermore, results from numerous control prophylaxis trials report significantly reduced risk of contracting COVID-19 with the regular use of ivermectin. Finally, the many examples of ivermectin distribution campaigns leading to rapid population-wide decreases in morbidity and mortality indicate that an oral agent effective in all phases of COVID-19 has been identified. There's lots of science stuff in here. So I would like to enter this into the record if this can be added in and then it can be reported. But in closing, after a discussion period, a vote was held on multiple aspects of the data of on ivermectin according to standard WHO guidelines on developmental processes. The panel found the certainty of evidence of ivermectin's effective effects on survival to be strong, and they recommended unconditional adoption for use of a prophylaxis and treatment of COVID-19. In summary, based on the totality of the trials and epidemiologic evidence presented in this review, along with the preliminary findings of the unitide, WHO meta-analysis and treatment, RCTs, whatever that is, and the guideline recommendation from the International Bird Conference, ivermectin should be globally and systematically deployed in the prevention and treatment of COVID-19. Nuts and bolts of why I bring this up is, why are we still trying to get people to take the vaccine when there's something that's been around for 40 years? Over 40 years? And now we're trying to get people, buying them off essentially, to go get a vaccine shot when there's something that is very viable here? Now, what I'd like to see, because Mr. Page, you're just about ready to do your state, your comments, I would like some kind of assert, an agreement from you that you're going to go over this. And that in tomorrow's statements that you'll make, like you do every day, that this is going to be added as something that is to be recommended and not just more Delta, you know, the Delta version of the vaccine. Because there is a Lambda variant coming along from Peru that apparently doesn't have the same responses to the current set of vaccines. That's all I got to say. Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is April Lenenbauer, followed by Tom Sullivan.
Good evening. My name is April Lenenbauer, and my ZIP code is 63043. Please forgive me, I did not have notes tonight. But I heard Dr. Page is going to be here. And since he's not here very often, I thought I ran out of the house to be here. Dr. Page, I'm begging you to please not make any kind of rash decisions about mandates and closing things and masks and things that don't work. They didn't work last time either. You didn't have any evidence. You never would show any evidence. You just get on the, every Monday and Wednesday, you would get on at 8:30 and talk about vaccines or we're closing things. Or even the numbers in the hospitals aren't true numbers because you don't even say how many people are St. Louis County residents. So none of the things, you never had any kind of evidence, like with the gyms. They're having to wear masks. It's unhealthy to work out like that. It was awful. So let's not go through that again. It ruined our economy for over a year unnecessarily. And studies show that it didn't do anything. I mean, Jefferson County and St. Charles County, they didn't have any of those things. And they did just as well as we did without them. And then I'm also here to tell you, whenever you said to your letter to Mark Carter that St. Louis County residents didn't care about your second job, I for one care. If I was going to have surgery, I would not want myesthesiologist to be thinking about what's going on in the county. I would want him 100% thinking about what he's using to put me to sleep. And I would also not want the county executive to think about what he's got to run to go and put somebody to sleep in surgery. So I would ask that you quit one of the other jobs. My preference would be that you resign from this job. But if you can't resign from this one, you resign from the other one. I'm hoping tonight that they go through with the subpoena so we can go ahead and get that over with. So we can get your records from your other job. And that's it. For the rest of the counsel, thank you for all your hard work. And Chairwoman Days, when they were talking, I didn't know Ms., I'm sorry, I just had a mind. The, yes, but you remind me a lot of her whenever they were talking about her and how she ran things. So I wanted to tell you, keep it up. It sounds like you are a lot, like you run things a lot like she did. So that's great. Thank you. Have a good night.
Our next speaker is Tom Sullivan, followed by Kelly McGowan.
Madam Chair, members of the counsel, you're again being asked to approve $240 million of bonds to expand the convention center in downtown St. Louis. At the same time, there is still no word on the Promise Recreation Center for North County, more than two years after the promise. I recently asked the Convention and Visitors Commission to provide copies of any plans for the rec center. The response, there are none. This is just the latest deception on matters relating to the convention center. The expansion makes no sense. The current facilities are not even being filled up. Conventions were down even before the pandemic. It's similar to the loop trolley supporters claiming they could get more riders if they get a third trolley car, but they can't even fill up two cars. The bunch at the Convention and Visitors Commission are mainly interested in keeping their gravy train going. Despite doing her job so poorly, Kitty Radcliffe makes $350,000 a year. Elia Davis has questioned why she makes so much, but has little to show for her big salary. This counsel has no obligation to fund the expansion of the convention center. This is because the funding is being done in a manner that subverts the Missouri Constitution, meaning it is avoiding voter approval. Let those who benefit from the convention center pay for the expansion, not taxpayers. A big lie put out by Kitty Radcliffe is that funds from the hotel motel tax can only be used for tourism. That isn't the case. The law clearly states that after dome obligations are met, revenue can go for any general revenue purpose. Cardinal Stadium is hardly considered a tourist attraction, yet about $110 million is going for the Cardinal Stadium from the hotel motel tax. The team doesn't exactly need the money. The billionaire owners essentially paid $50 million for the team. It is now worth $2.2 billion, but could easily bring $2.5 billion if put on the market. This would mean a profit of $2,450 million. Yet St. Louis County is still paying millions of dollars every year to subsidize the stadium. At the same time, St. Louis County has a great many needs going unmet. This counsel has been fooled before by Kitty Radcliffe. I don't think you want to be fooled again. Unless there's a commitment for the recreation center, you should not even consider the bonds. But I think the entire $240 million should go for recreation centers and other things to improve the lives of the people of St. Louis County, not enrich special interests. Thank you for listening to my comments.
Our next speaker is Kelly McGowan, followed by Azor Liggins.
I'm Kelly McGowan, and my ZIP code is 63108. Good evening. I'm speaking as a health equity advocate and the Director of Built Environment Advocacy for the entity Evolve, which is an acronym for Elevating Voices of Leaders Vying for Equity. In this role, I work alongside the community, making sure they are included in the processes that shape how their communities are designed. Last summer, this legislative body passed resolutions declaring racism a public health crisis and supporting equitable policies that prioritize the health of all people, especially African-Americans. This is a great step in the right direction, but how does this translate into action? One pressing issue for North County residents, which I have spoken about for weeks, is the overabundance of liquor stores and other businesses that provide alcohol for off-site consumption in their communities. This is problematic, as high liquor store density is associated with various adverse outcomes, including those related to increases in crime. Evolve's North County Action Team, which is a collective of community members working towards the creation of a thriving North County, has started a petition. The petition specifically calls on this legislative body to monitor the density of businesses where alcohol is purchased and consumed off-site. In addition, we are calling on this legislative body to consider this density prior to issuing new liquor licenses for similar businesses. We believe these actions will curb the proliferation of these businesses in North County. As of yesterday at 12:20 PM, we have obtained 69 signatures from St. Louis County residents that are in support of this monitoring and consideration prior to issuing new liquor licenses. I emailed each of you those signatures. It is important to note that those signatures do not include the physical signatures that our action team has been able to obtain from St. Louis County residents. To close, I will use the words from Ms. Fennel explaining why she signed our petition. We are all products of our environment. Healthy environments support healthy individuals. It's important to build healthy environments in all neighborhoods, regardless of who lives there. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight and hope we can collaborate to make this happen.
Our next speaker is Azor Liggins, followed by Karen Smith.
Good evening, Executive Page, Chairwoman Days, and the entire county council, I'm sorry. Since returning June 1, racism has been my issue of concern. And since June 2020, I have requested that this healthcare crisis be added to the weekly agenda for serious discussion. I personally know the devastations of racism. Racism is exhausting, and in many instances, it's African-Americans targeting other African-Americans. I would like to make two requests. One, I am calling for the resignation of Councilwoman Rita Days' new African-American Administrative Assistant, Maria Chappelle-Nadell. Councilwoman Days, I give you all respect. The no-confidence vote comes from working with your office and the professionalism demonstrated by your former assistant compared to your office since Ms. Chappelle-Nadell joined your staff. Ms. Doughty and I shared with you our concerns in detail. We are available to share our stories with the counsel as a whole. Councilwoman Days, all of your constituents deserve a trustworthy, people-friendly, and well-trained assistant to handle your high volume of work. Like the no former, I'm sorry, like the no-confidence vote declared on the police chief, Mary Braxton, non-African-American, we feel former Senator Maria Chappelle-Nadell has fumbled her way through the position and has not worked with the African-American residents in North County past or present. Furthermore, there are restrictions regarding any matters in which a former senator engages. The handout displays former Senator- The handout displays former Senator Chappelle Nadell's office clearly aiding and abetting racism targeting African Americans. Two, I would like to invite Executive Page, this council, and the county councilor to sit in on Boeing versus Azura Liggins case. This is the fallout of the former Senator Chappelle Nadell's vicious abstraction. This case makes a mockery of our courts. This case is supported by no natural or human plaintiff. The crimes and the illnesses are imaginary. Attorney Greg Lemley filed this frivolous case on perjury information and for that, he should be disbarred. The injunction has ended, has no end date, and the court gave me no avenue to correct longstanding disability problems. On July 15th, 2021, before Judge Richard Stewart, Division 2, at 1:30, you will see, "I have no rights, the court or a white man is bound to respect." Dred Scott, 1857. This is what slavery really looks like. Second handout. Please save the date, and if you cannot attend, please send an assistant. Unfortunately, the case will not be available on audio or video. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Karen Smith, followed by Josh Shear.
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Uh, my name is Karen Smith. I live in Webster Grove, 63119. Um, I have a just really serious concern about, um, that the general public, people at large, would understand more about the vaccine, the COVID vaccine that is being pushed door-to-door with gift cards, with, um, um, more coercion, which I feel like it is. I went to the pharmacy today to pick up my inhaler. I'm on three different prescriptions for asthma. And, um, it's, it's being, it's a very big problem, and I don't have any desire to be injected with a vaccine that has that kind of an ingredient in it that will go into my body and make it worse. Um, I, when I went to the pharmacy, I asked the girl that, um, gave me the prescription if, uh, she could give me information on the vaccine. I said, if I were to get one, what kind of informed consent do you have? And she said, do you mean like information? I said, yeah, like I would like some information about what's in it, et cetera. So she said, this is at a CVS pharmacy. I don't know if we have that. I thought, well, that's kind of odd that you don't have anything to give to people to tell them what's in this thing that we're insisting that everyone get. And so she said, I'll check. She came back and she said, um, yeah, we can get something for you. So I waited a little bit and she gave me seven pages about the Moderna vaccine. Through that, those pages and all those pages, it says multiple times that it is an experimental. It's only emergency authorized. It is not approved by the FDA. Also that the side effects were headaches. They were, um, nausea, you know, cold cough, that kind of thing. Nowhere in there did it say that death is a consequence. On the VAERS website of our government, the CDC has published information on how many deaths there are from COVID vaccines, and the total is 9,048. A month ago, it was 5,038. 9,000 people have died from taking the vaccine. My doctor, who gave me the prescriptions for my asthma, spent 30 minutes trying to talk me into getting it. He said that he doesn't believe any of this. He thinks not a single person has died from it. What is going on? How do we not get accurate information? We want people to take this. We want people to give their kids this. Kids are dying from it. I brought pieces of, I brought a copy for everyone, if I can submit that. Uh, this other page is just the first page of one. There are 438,441 cases where there are adverse reactions. That's heart issues. That's myocarditis. That's pericarditis. I can't even say those, all those words.
That's three minutes, Madam Chair.
And so there are a lot of, there are 30 pages. I gave my doctors 30 pages of it all written out of all the details. And it's a government website where we can go and see what this is all about, so.
Our next speaker is Josh Shear, followed by Chris Davies, Davis.
Josh Shear, 63011. $1.7 million for an unused morgue. $2.4 million for out-of-state COVID consultants who could not even produce an itemized receipt. Almost $200,000 spent suing yourselves over who had the count, who had the council chair position. Gift cards to bribe people into getting a non-FDA-approved experimental gene therapy drug. And now Sam Page wants to use my money, our money, to sue the state over the Second Amendment Preservation Act. Is this the best intentions of St. Louis County? Beth Orwick, you know this lawsuit is dead upon arrival. So is this in the best interest of the county? After all the money this council has wasted, after all the families that lost their livelihoods because of the poor decisions made by Sam Page, you all decided to spend more money to add additional attorneys. I am disappointed that my conservative representative, Mark Carter, voted in favor of adding these attorneys. Mark, could this money have been used any better? Maybe propose additional tax breaks for businesses, business owners who have suffered over the past year, or tax breaks for us citizens who paid full taxes for services not rendered because of the lockdowns? Just a thought. However, the most disappointing representative here tonight is unfortunately Representative Tim Fitch for voting in favor of using our tax dollars to bribe citizens into receiving a medical procedure. I expect this from Sam Page and the other socialist tyrants up on this stage, but not you, sir. I don't care if it's a cure for cancer. The government has no business influencing its citizens on any medical procedure, period. Stop wasting our money. I work hard every day to give my family the best life possible, and this is what you deem in my best interest? It's not difficult. Keep our roads in good shape. Make sure the police and first responders are well-funded. Make sure the libraries are in good condition. And stay the hell out of my healthcare and ensure my constitutional rights are protected. That's it. And this county better not allow any of this federal door-to-door BS to occur here. Do any of you have any damn moral compass left? Or are you still just, are you all just Soros-funded puppets? Shame on all of you for letting this incompetence continue and shame on all of us citizens for letting our county get to where it is today. I'm having a difficult time understanding why I pay my taxes. I guarantee I'm not the only one. Thank you.
The next speaker is Chris Davis, followed by Joan Hoffman.
Good evening, Madam Chair, County Executive, members of the council. My name's Chris Davis, Director of Government Affairs for Site Improvement Association, representing over 120 contractors in the St. Louis metro area. Just a few weeks ago, this council approved significant rules to the MWBE program in St. Louis County. When those rules were being drafted, Site reached out to administrative staff and offered input to those rules. The response was, why would we do that? After those rules were published, I reached out to members of this council and asked to provide input into those rules. I was told input could provide, be provided in a public setting. After the rules were finalized, they were being reviewed internally. Those rules were welcomed by St. Louis County contractors who participate in the program. They were needed. There were but a few issues with them that we thought could be addressed, but were ignored. Tonight on the agenda, we have new changes to the MWBE program that we would respectfully request that we meet with the Office of Diversity and/or any members of this council to discuss these changes to the program. The county, the contractors in St. Louis County are no longer feeling as though they are partners with the county. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Joan Hoffman, followed by Sheridan Jones.
My name is Joan Hoffman, zip code 63038. First, I want to say my condolences on the lost, loss of Hazel Irby. And, um, I would also like to begin by thanking Madam Chair and Councilwoman Webb. Uh, you have both worked in a bipartisan fashion with Councilman Harder and Fitch, and we appreciate that. We appreciate you reaching across the aisles because it doesn't happen often enough. So I'm going to say thank you. This weekend, I saw someone very close to me, but unfortunately, I wasn't able to see him since the beginning of the pandemic. He owns a small local business. He was shut down for three months. Loss of income, huge. He managed to stay in business. But how much did he receive from the CARES Act funds? $1,000. I think that's kind of pathetic. Where did the rest of that money go, Sam Page? We don't know. I understand some of you are looking into it. Please continue to look into it. We would like answers. Because unlike you, Sam Page, my friend doesn't have a second job. That was not right. And now you're trying to scare us again with the Delta variant. Now, I've seen the headlines and they're pretty scary. But my understanding, and granted, I'm not a doctor, but my understanding is that viruses do mutate. And they might spread faster, but they also become less dangerous. Now, again, I'm not a doctor. I don't have anything scientific in front of me right now. But what I'm asking you, to every member, what I'm asking every member of this council is, if and when Sam Page tries to use that as a reason to shut us down or impose a mask mandate, I ask you to look at the facts. Let's look past the fear-mongering headlines. I have to shut them out sometimes. I have to seek out the facts. I can do it. I'm sure we, we can all do it. Let's base our decisions on the actual facts of the case rather than scaring everyone because we've been scared for the last year and frankly, we're getting a little tired. And I'm afraid if we keep frightening people, they're just going to stop listening and shut down. Let's give them the facts and let them make a decision. And if you feel the need to make a decision, base it on that. That's all I can ask. And also, let's try this time, let's focus on protecting the vulnerable. Because we're not all completely vulnerable. Some of us are way more vulnerable than that, than the rest of us. And I think that's who really needs our help. All right? Thank you for listening.
Our next speaker is Sheridan Jones, followed by Janice, and I'm sorry, I can't read the last name. Looks like Gell. Gell.
Good evening. My name is Sheridan Jones. I live in 63034. I'm here as a concerned, North County resident. I've been in North County for over 40 years. I'm also a concerned, as a nurse, been in healthcare as a nurse for over 34 years. And I'm here to say this evening that, um, as a part of the action team Evolve, uh, as Kelly McGowan explained to you, we are a community advocate. We, we're here for you guys. We're on the level of the residents. And we see a lot of things that's going on. One of the things that's happening, I have, uh, one of my, um, partners who wasn't able to make it here today. Um, he has, he owns a daycare. And on the side of his establishment is a liquor store. And they're getting ready to build another one or allow another one behind him. And he was, we were discussing the issue and he said, well, it's funny, it's not funny, but it's sad that these people, they come over and so they spill over into the daycare parking lot. And they sit, they're situate their self around there and drink their liquor, smoke whatever, and have conversations that then they do not take in consideration the children. Um, also, as a nurse, um, I've been in the healthcare field, like I said, for over 30 years. And recently, we had to initiate protocols now to where we have to deal with people with alcoholism. And I believe the pandemic has caused an increase in it because now I work on a cardiology department, but we spill over and we get the patients in who are alcohol, who are alcoholics now. And it's bad because we had to have more money sitters. We had to have people who just pay close, close attention. And people have been dying because people don't even know they're alcoholics. But we need to decrease the alcohol density in North County. That's the main thing we're here for tonight. And it's becoming a problem. And I'm here to say that before it becomes a problem and to where we can't handle, like some of other things is going on. And I know they, they advocated and made alcohol legal, but that doesn't mean that it's the best thing for us. So we need to try to decrease the alcohol density in North County, for real. It's, it's really bad and it's sad because these kids are affected by it, whether directly or indirectly by their parents becoming alcoholics, by the people who are around in their community, who are, they, they, these kids are looking at these people and thinking that it's okay. And it's not. But it's some people who are going to do it anyway. We know that. But the thing we asking you to do is just decrease the density. We don't need any more liquor stores like this. And we want to appreciate and recognize, uh, Councilwoman Days, Webb, and Clancy and listen to our concern. And we want to advocate for our community and say, please, look at this. Because just like the, the opioid became a pandemic, the alcoholism is the next one you're going to have to deal with. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Janice Giles. Thank you, followed by Roz McCoy.
Good evening. My name is Janice Giles. I'm in zip code 63034. I am part of the Evolve, uh, commi, uh, Action Committee. And my main concern is all of the liquor stores that are opening up in North County. And I was wondering if there could be some concern from issuing license. Again, I am also friends with someone owning daycares and there are liquor stores behind them, across from them. People buy alcohol, come over to the daycare, drink it. They won't drink it at the liquor store, but they'll spill over to the daycare. And I just think something, uh, should be done about that and maybe, uh, not issue as many license for alcohol and bring something to North County that the people, um, the people for youth, senior citizens, kids can all enjoy. And, um, I'm really not a speaker, but that's mainly my concern is just to decrease the alcohol in the, in North County and the liquor license. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Roz McCoy, followed by Tammy. And again, I apologize, I cannot read the last name.
Hi, my name is Roz McCoy. Uh, my area code is 63137. My main concern is the same like them with the liquor stores being in the neighborhood. I think it's way too many of them. Um, it just causes issues long-term. Um, I think that the neighborhood should have more things for the kids to do, uh, like some sort of rec center and just have something for them to occupy their time with. The more liquor stores and things in the neighborhood is just not like a pos, is not a positive, um, like outlook. And so I think it should be a lot more things for the kids to do and instead of them just having this idle time and not be able to do anything. So thanks for listening.
Our next speaker is Tammy, followed by Jeremy Brown.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Tammy Bosch. Area code, my zip code is sister, six three zero three four. I want to start off by saying good evening again. I've been a resident of North County, St. Louis County for forty-two years. I worked in North County, St. Louis County for two years. I'm also a member of the Evolve Action Team. We are a collective community, community stakeholders, working towards creating a thriving North County. I am speaking tonight to highlight a pressing issue in North County, the overwhelming abundance of liquor stores. This has been a problem which has contributed to the increase of both crime and illness in our community. With the increase of liquor stores, I witnessed a dramatic increase of diagnostic treatment centers and centers being built in our neighborhoods also. I believe that we of North County, we deserve better. We trying to decide what we want to do with Jamestown. I believe we should have something for the children, the youth, the senior citizens. And I'm nervous too. But, but we deserve better in North County, getting more liquor stores being open. So I would like to see that you all will regulate it better. We have enough. Let's stop opening them up and do something different that will help our, our residents in North County. I also understand that Chesterfield is getting ready to open up a center. That can be in North County. That can be Jamestown. Because who's going to work there? North County people. Who's going to go there and enjoy it? North County people. So I believe that we should have it in our area instead of in Chesterfield. Okay? So I want you all to take that in consideration. And let's do something different for North County. We deserve better. We deserve better stores, grocery stores. Liquor stores are not the answer. I know it makes revenue for someone, but it's not good for our people. So please, take that into consideration, and let's do some change. Thank you.
Our final speaker this evening, Madam Chair, is Jeremy Brown.
I'm sorry? Oh, okay. So Jeremy had to leave.
That's all our speakers.
All right. Thank you very much.
Is there one more speaker on there?
Yeah, I thought you had already did your piece. Yeah. Our final speaker this evening, Madam Chair, is Mr. Paul Berry.
Yeah, well, I came to be nice with you. I will counsel County Executive, Chairwoman. Just got a smorgasbord of things I want to bring to your attention. I'm going to move in the fast pace. One of them is, as you guys know, in North County, we have many food deserts, which is a problem. A lot of people depend upon grocery stores. Just because we need to fix a solution doesn't mean that we always have to pass an ordinance. Okay? So one of the things I'm going to ask from our County Executive, and I directed it to you, Paige, but obviously, you have a health department and other resources, so I don't expect you to knock on doors yourself. But we need to provide more sugar-free opportunities for people. African Americans have high diabetes rates. And when I live in Maryland Heights, I can walk into a store and I have twenty different options on the be healthy. The second I leave my community to go north, these options don't exist. So just simply not trying to pass an ordinance, not trying to shove it down the small business owners throats, just a pamphlet saying, when you order, try to order a couple things. I mean, this is, this would have a significant difference. It might sound like a petty thing, but when you have people that don't have transportation in that corner store is all that they have, we have got to find a way to utilize and work with our business owners. Again, not by pressuring, but by asking. Next thing is the crime that's going on throughout St. Louis County, but definitely in North County. It is out of control. We have a group of young people that quite frankly, just don't have enough to do. There will be some suggestions that I'll be bringing to the council over the next couple of weeks, but I want to hit it because I only have a minute thirty. Our people that get out of high school, if they're not going off to a university, we need to be working with our unions. And I want to call it a bounty, okay? And maybe we can set up a small fund through the county that every kid that a union gets, union certified within a year after high school, gets some sort of financial benefit. We'll have to figure out what that is. But we got to get our kids working. Our times the devil's workshop, ladies and gentlemen, and that's what's happening there. Okay? And if, and if I wasn't busy and I didn't have a family pushing me, I'd have been right with them when I was young. The last thing I want to talk about is the use of COVID funds for medical facilities. Again, there's nothing more important than a person and their health. But there's two things I want you to consider before you do that. When I ran for County Executive, I spent a lot of time talking to people in North County, and they're very unhappy with the John C. Murphy Center. They don't feel like that they're getting the respect and the services that they need there. So before we build another facility for twenty-something million dollars, let's make sure we understand the matrix of how we're running these systems and make sure the residents are happy. I would prefer the nonprofits to step up in this space. Real quick, the county, the county council and county executive in St. Louis County needs to be focused on three groups of people, okay? Children, disabled, seniors, okay? That's where we need to put our foot down. I'm going to ask for extension of fifteen seconds. That is very important for us to focus on developing and taking care of them, okay? And before we spend twenty-five million dollars or twenty-two million dollars to build another center, let's make sure that it's actually what's needed. Because I, I'm seeing growth in the nonprofit space of healthcare here that is phenomenal that I think they can take care of this issue. But what we got to do is we got to get our kids active. We got to get them, and we got to get them with activities. The good parents, and I hate to say good and bad, but I'll leave you with this, the good parents, they're busting their tail, working two jobs a day. They don't have the money or the transportation to get these kids activities. That's where the county should come in. That should be our first agenda. God bless.
Thank you. All right. Thank you all so much for your patience here. This was a very lengthy public forum, but I think it was very worthy, and we appreciate your coming out and giving us the benefit of your wisdom and suggestions. So moving on now, we will have the report of the County Executive.
Good evening. The rate of new COVID-19 infections is rising quickly. It's up sixty-three percent over the past two weeks. We're not expecting a slowdown anytime soon. All you have to do is look to the west a few hours down Highway forty-four, and you're seeing a record number of new COVID-19 cases in southwest Missouri. Rates of new infections are much higher among population groups with low vaccination rates. And that includes those living in the inner north part of St. Louis County, where the rate of new infections is eighteen cases per hundred thousand people. And that's more than three and a half times the central part of the county, showing how great a disparity can be just a few miles away. Countywide, the rate among black residents is five times the rate among white residents. The rate among people in their teens, twenties, and thirties is four to five times the rate of those in their seventies and older. A full report by the Department of Public Health on latest COVID trends can be found at sclcorona.com. Just click on the Statistics tab. The rapidly rising positivity rate in the county indicates that not enough people are being tested. If people don't know if they're infected, then they don't isolate. And as a result, they don't notify people who have been in contact with them. So those folks can quarantine, monitor themselves for symptoms, and get tested. The County Health Department issued a health advisory yesterday, encouraging anyone who has cold or flu-like symptoms to get a COVID test. The symptoms commonly associated with the Delta variant include headaches, burning nose, and a sore throat. And these are somewhat different than the Alpha variant of COVID-19, which is a fever, cough, and loss of taste or smell. So if you're experiencing any symptoms at all, get tested, even if you've been vaccinated. While the rates of COVID-related hospital admissions in the St. Louis region are relatively low, that's for now. However, we expect that to change over the coming weeks, based on our prior experience and the experience of those in southwest Missouri. The variant is spreading quickly, and this variant has the ability to leave a lot of devastation in its wake. And that's why it's so critical to get vaccinated now. The vaccines are safe, effective, and free. That goes for everyone twelve and older. Tomorrow, I'll be in Ferguson to announce a new initiative with barber shops and beauty salons throughout the county to help get more people vaccinated. It's part of a comprehensive community outreach effort. Ferguson Mayor Ella Jones and Chairwoman Days are scheduled to join me. Last year, when COVID-19 was spreading quickly, we knew little about the virus and had no vaccine. This year, we have an infective vaccine in hand that can prevent serious illness and death and help us avoid the darkest moments that dominated most of 2020. So please do your part to get your friends and family members vaccinated. Share your stories about why you got vaccinated. That's all for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to introduction of bills.
Bill number one seventy-seven, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway. An ordinance amending ordinance number twelve thousand three hundred and seven as amended by repealing and reenacting Section Three pertaining to PC seventy-seven dash eighty-five, Noel Esmond. Bill number one seventy-eight, introduced by Councilmember Days. An ordinance amending Chapter five oh three, Title Five, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances nineteen seventy-four as amended. Board of Equalization by repealing and reenacting Sections five oh three point zero four zero, five oh three point zero eight zero, five oh three point zero nine zero, five oh three point two zero zero, and five oh three point three zero zero pertaining to the Boards of Equalization and providing for primary assignments of current members to the Boards of Equalization to a board designated to primarily consider petitions pertaining to commercial property and a board designed to primarily consider petitions pertaining, petition, excuse me, petitions pertaining to residential property. Bill number one seventy-nine, introduced by Councilmember Days. An ordinance amending Title Five, Chapter five oh two, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances nineteen seventy-four as amended. Leaving and collection of taxes by repealing and reenacting Section five oh two point four one zero, continuing an emergency telephone tax. Bill number one eighty, introduced by Councilmember Days. An ordinance amending ordinance number twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and thirteen pertaining to a PY twenty Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, WIOA, National Dislocated Workers Grant slash WIA, National Emergency Grant from the Missouri Department of Economic Development, Division of Workforce Development. Bill number one eighty-one, introduced by Councilmember Days. An ordinance authorizing the County Executive to execute a contract with Keefe Commissary Network LLC for a commissary deposit and prepaid release card program for the Department of Justice Services and authorizing the County Executive and the Director of the Department of Justice Services to execute necessary documents. Bill number one eighty-two, introduced by Councilmember Tracus. An ordinance authorizing the County Executive to grant two permanent easements on, over, and under a tract of land located in Wideman Park to Metropolitan St. Louis Sewer District, MSD, for the purpose of periodic maintenance and improvements to MSD's existing deep tunnel shaft and access thereto. Appropriating funds received as compensation for the granting of said easements and authorizing the County Executive and the Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation to execute necessary documents. Bill number one eighty-three, introduced by Councilmember Days. An ordinance authorizing the County Executive to accept a grant of up to six hundred and seven thousand five hundred ninety-one dollars and fifty-one cents from the Missouri Department of Transportation, appropriating same for support of the Commercial Motor Vehicle Enforcement Unit of the Department of Police, and authorizing the County Executive and the Superintendent of Police to execute necessary documents. Bill number one eighty-four, introduced by Councilmember Days. An ordinance amending ordinance number twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and fifty-five pertaining to a grant from the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services for support of the Department of Pub, for the support of the Department of Public Health's participation in the city's readiness initiative. Bill number one eighty-five, introduced by Councilmember Days. An ordinance amending ordinance number twenty-eight thousand sixty-eight by repealing and reenacting Section One pertaining to a grant from the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services for support of the Department of Public Health's Epidemiology and Laboratory Capacity, ELC CARES Project. Bill number one eighty-six, introduced by Councilmember Days. An ordinance authorizing the County Executive to execute a contract with ABNA Engineering Incorporated for engineering services related to the North Hanley Road resurfacing project and authorizing the Director of the Transportation and Public Works to execute necessary documents and revisions to the schedule of work activities, AR dash one eight two one. Bill number one eighty-seven, introduced by Councilmember Days. An ordinance authorizing the County Executive to execute a contract with Humane Society of Missouri to provide spay and neuter services for the Department of Public Health and authorizing the County Executive and the Director of the Department of Public Health to execute necessary documents. Bill number one eighty-eight, introduced by Councilmember Days. An ordinance authorizing the County Executive to execute a contract with Engineering Design Source Incorporated for consulting engineering services related to the West Forest and Avenue resurfacing project and authorizing the Director of Transportation and Public Works to execute necessary documents and revisions to the schedule of work activities, AR dash one eight two seven. Bill number one eighty-nine, introduced by Councilmember Tracus. An ordinance authorizing the County Executive to execute a contract with HDR Engineering Incorporated for engineering services related to the replacement of the Revis Barracks Road Bridge Number four oh eight, removal of the Green Park Road Bridge Number four oh nine, and realignment of the intersection of Revis Barracks Road and Green Park Road, and authorizing the Director of Transportation and Public Works to execute necessary documents and revisions to the schedule of work activities, AR dash one two eight nine. Bill number one ninety, introduced by Councilmember Tracus. An ordinance declaring the public necessity of and providing for the opening, widening, and establishing of a section of public road designated as Bauer Road, lying wholly within unincorporated St. Louis County, Missouri, directing the acquisition of real property therefor, and authorizing the execution of contracts, agreements, and related documents, CR dash one six seven seven. Madam Chair, that is all the bills.
Thank you very much. Moving on to perfection.
Bill number twenty, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Please hold.
Bill number twenty is held.
Bill number thirty-two, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Please hold Bill number thirty-two.
Bill number thirty-two is held.
Bill number seventy-five, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway.
This is my electric vehicle regula, my electric vehicle readiness bill. I just sent a couple of options to all council members on possible substitute bills, and we have a hearing scheduled tentatively for next Tuesday. So with that, I hope everybody takes an opportunity to read through the bills, comes with questions. We'll talk more next week. And with that, I move to hold Bill number seventy-five.
Bill number seventy-five is held.
Substitute Bill number one for Bill number seventy-seven, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to hold Substitute Bill number one for Bill number seventy-seven.
Substitute Bill number one for Bill number seventy-seven is held.
Substitute Bill number one for Bill number eighty-eight, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to hold Substitute Bill number one for Bill number eighty-eight.
Substitute Bill number one for Bill number eighty-eight is held.
Bill number one thirty-nine, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move to hold Bill number one thirty-nine. Bill number one thirty-nine is held.
Bill number one fifty-six, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to hold Bill number one fifty-six.
Bill number one fifty-six is held.
Bill number one seventy-four, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move to perfect Bill number one seven four. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Bill number one seven four is perfected.
Bill number one seventy-five, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move to perfect Bill number one seven five. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Bill number one seven five is perfected.
Bill number one seventy-six, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move to perfect Bill number one seven six. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Bill number one seven six is perfected. Moving on to final passage.
Bill number three twenty, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to hold Bill number three twenty.
Bill number three twenty is held.
Bill number fourteen, introduced by Councilmembers Tracus, Days, Dunaway, Fitch, Walton Gray, Clancy, and Harder.
Please hold Bill number fourteen, please.
Bill number fourteen is held.
Substitute Bill number one for Bill number Substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 76, introduced by Councilmembers Dunaway and Harder.
I move to hold Substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 76.
Substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 76 is held.
Bill number 164, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move for final passage of Bill number 164.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in-- roll call, please.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 164, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 164 is finally passed.
Bill number 165, introduced by Councilmember Daze.
I move for final passage of Bill number 165. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 165, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 165 is finally passed.
Bill number 167, introduced by Councilmember Daze.
I move for final passage of Bill number 167. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 167, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 167 is finally passed.
Bill number 168, introduced by Councilmember Daze.
I move for final passage of Bill number 168. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 168, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 168 is finally passed.
Bill number 169, introduced by Councilmember Daze.
I move for final passage of Bill number 169. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 169, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 169 is finally passed.
Bill number 170, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move for final passage of Bill 170.
170.
170, I'm sorry.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 170, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 170 is finally passed.
Bill number 171, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway for Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill number 171.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 171, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 171 is finally passed.
Bill number 172, introduced by Councilmember Daze.
I move for final passage of Bill number 172. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 172, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 172 is finally passed.
Bill number 173, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway for Tracus.
Move for final passage of Bill number 173.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 173, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 173 is finally passed. Moving on to resolutions.
Madam Chair, we have six resolutions remaining this evening. Resolution number 2, introduced by Councilmembers Webb and Daze.
Please read the resolution.
Resolution, whereas Royal Vagabonds is a nonprofit philanthropic organization that began in the 1930s after a small group of St. Louis black professionals and businessmen banded together to plan, implement, and share common goals and activities due to limited social and intellectual opportunities that existed for men of color during that period. And whereas, the Royal Vagabonds will host a capstone event in honor of its 91st anniversary on September 12, 2021 at the Renaissance St. Louis Airport Hotel, and whereas it is appropriate for the council and all of St. Louis County to pause to acknowledge such an important milestone achieved by an organization dedicated to serving its community. Now therefore be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows: Section 1, the County Council congratulates Royal Vagabonds on its 91st anniversary and extends its best wishes to its leadership and members.
Councilwoman Webb.
I move to adopt this resolution.
I move to adopt Resolution number 2. Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Resolution number 2, there are seven ayes.
Resolution number 2 is adopted.
Resolution number 3 this evening, introduced by Councilmember Webb.
Please read the entire resolution.
Yes, ma'am. Resolution, whereas the McNeil family reunion was formally established in 1990 by Elizabeth Victoria Cannon, the great-granddaughter of Oliver and Henrietta McNeil, and whereas Oliver McNeil and Henrietta McNeil married in the late 1860s in Bolivar, Tennessee, and whereas Oliver and Henrietta later welcomed one son, Albert, and four daughters, and whereas Albert later married Lucy Woods, and the two became parents of seven children, Alicia, Mattie Bell, Katie, John, Roy, Hasty, and Andrew, and whereas each of the seven children ventured into their own path and became military veterans, homeowners, entrepreneurs, and homemakers, while also establishing themselves as parents, grandparents, great-grandparents, great-great-grandparents, and great-great-great-grandparents of family members who gathered today in celebration. And whereas the descendants of the McNeil family continue the family legacy by advancing their values through empathetic beliefs, economic stability, educational principles, community relationships, family sustainability, spiritual guidance, and unconditional love. And whereas the McNeil family reunion 2021 is scheduled for Saturday, July 24, 2021 in St. Louis County, and whereas it is appropriate for the council and all of St. Louis County to pause to acknowledge such rich family history and admirable values. Now therefore be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows: Section 1, the County Council congratulates the McNeil family on its 2021 McNeil family reunion and extends its best wishes to its celebrants.
Councilwoman Webb.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 3.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Resolution number 3, there are seven ayes.
Resolution number 3 is adopted.
Resolution number 4 this evening, introduced by Councilmembers Daze, Webb, and Dunaway.
Councilwoman Webb, you want to handle that?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you please read the beginning of the resolution?
Yes, ma'am. Whereas Kathy's Kitchen was established in 2013 in Ferguson, Missouri by Kathy and Jerome Jenkins. Excuse me. Now therefore be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows: Section 1, the County Council congratulates Kathy, Jerome, and the staff of Kathy's Kitchen on its reopening and extends its best wishes for many years of continued success.
Thank you, sir. I move for the adoption of Resolution 4.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Done there many times and looking forward to going back.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Resolution number 4, there are seven ayes.
Thank you very much, and I share that with Councilwoman Fitch. I was hoping they would read the part where that Melissa Etheridge will be joining them at the opening, the grand opening, reopening of Kathy's Kitchen. That's kind of special. Thank you. Our Resolution number 4 is adopted.
Resolution number 5 this evening, introduced by Councilmember Webb.
Thank you. Would you please read the beginning of the resolution?
Yes, ma'am. Whereas, Live Church in North St. Louis County was co-founded and is led by husband-and-wife Pastor Shadrick Martin and co-pastor Lady Tiffany Martin. Now therefore be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows: Section 1, the County Council expresses its admiration for the accomplishments of Live Church and its deepest gratitude to Pastor Martin and co-pastor Lady Martin for their contributions to the community.
Councilwoman Webb.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 5.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Resolution number 5, there are seven ayes.
Resolution number 5 is adopted.
Resolution number 6 this evening, introduced by Councilmembers Webb, Daze, and Tracus.
Would you please read the entire resolution?
Yes, ma'am. Resolution, whereas Councilwoman Hazel Erby was the first African-American woman to serve on the St. Louis County Council, as well as the first African-American woman to serve as council chair, where she often stood alone on issues that faced minorities and women of the community she served. And whereas, Councilwoman Erby worked tirelessly to finally pass the first minority and women inclusion bill in St. Louis County, which gave minority and women-owned businesses greater opportunity to obtain contracts with the county, and she continued to fight for inclusion until her final days. And whereas, Councilwoman Erby passed away on July 2, 2021, and her death leaves our community with a deep feeling of sorrow for the loss of such a loved, honored, and respected leader, public servant, and friend. Whereas, prior to her service on the council from 2004 to 2019, Councilwoman Erby served as the Executive Director for the Community Partnership for the Prevention of Drug and Substance Abuse, Site Director for the Caring Communities Program at Barbersay Jordan School in University City, and founder of TAP City Program in University City, a program that paired teenagers with senior citizens to assist the seniors with errands and chores. And whereas, Councilwoman Erby's crowning achievement was the founding of the Fannie Lou Hamer Democratic Coalition of St. Louis County, a group of elected officials assembled by her to work together for the betterment of North County. And whereas, Councilwoman Erby was a surrogate mother, grandmother, and aunt to countless young people, elected officials, and employees of St. Louis County Government, many of whom oftentimes referred to her as, quote, "Mama Hazel," end quote. And whereas, Councilwoman Erby was the recipient of many awards and honors, including the St. Louis City NAACP Medgar Wiley Evers Medal of Freedom, the Dr. Dorothy I. Height Leadership Award from the National Council of Negro Women, the Uniquely Used City Award, and culminating with the Missouri House of Representatives designating September 22, 2021 as, quote, "Hazel Erby Day," end quote, in Missouri, in recognition of her lifelong dedication to public service and community improvements. And whereas, above all else, Hazel Erby enjoyed her life with her husband, high school sweetheart Louis Senior, her children Angela, Christina, and Louis Junior, her grandchildren, and scores of people she loved, mentored, and nurtured. And whereas, it is appropriate for the council and our entire community to pause to honor a woman so devoted to family, friends, and public service. Now therefore be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows: Section 1, the County Council extends its sincerest condolences to all affected by the passing of our very own County Councilwoman Hazel M. Erby. Section 2, the Administrative Director shall send certified copies of this resolution to Mr. Louis Erby Senior, Ms. Angela Erby, Ms. Christina Erby Carr, and Mr. Louis Erby Junior.
Thank you. Madam Chair, before we do the adoption of this resolution, I would like to take a moment to share my acknowledgement and tribute to Ms. Hazel Erby. Just as the gentleman, Mr. Paul Berry, shared earlier, she was monumental to all of us, and I only knew her for a short time, but so before I get emotional, I'll read this short statement. When you step into a different world that you've nev-- that you could never imagine, you look for those eyes that exude safety, ensure peace, and ones that give you a sense of warmth. Ms. Hazel Erby has been that and so much more to me in such a very short period of time. As I was beginning my life as a public servant leader, and she was turning her page to a different journey, from the very first time we talked, she believed in me. No questions, no hesitation, just acceptance and support from day one. I don't know how we got there, but I remember sharing with her, I just want to do right by people, and we deserve so much better. Her response, you're gonna be fine. We got you. And I haven't looked back since. That bond of trust was sealed in that exact moment. She reminded me of my mother and my grandmother, in a perfect mix, kind and gentle, with a firmness that didn't mix words. Mrs. Erby's authenticity and integrity couldn't be faked or compromised. When she helped, she expected nothing in return. In fact, I think her true joy was just to help others and to see them happy. She never had an angle nor aspired for a title. She only wanted to serve her community with honesty and excellence. I once heard a local leader say, what is your return on investment? What is your ROI? Many of us stand at the table, sit at the table, and are able to be leaders in our Many of us stand at the table, sit at the table, and are able to be leaders in our communities, schools, and churches because of Ms. Hazel Erby. She invested in each one of us. She nurtured us with her words of wisdom. She led by an impeccable example of how serving the people is not to serve yourself. She showed us true leadership and commanded respect. And the attention of the room by simp- simply entering with grace and kindness and never mumbling a word. It was never about her, it was always about the people she represented. Many of us who love and cherish her showered her with flaws while she could enjoy them. However, her legacy aligns with our ROI. Her return on investment in us is measured how we serve our community. Her ROI in us is how we respect every person with no reverence of title, but by knowing that they are a child of God, that they alone guarantees our kindness. Our ROI to Ms. Hazel Erby is serving others with humility, for with humility comes wisdom. Ms. Herb- Mrs. Erby's ROI in each of us is to ensure that as leaders, we work to do right by people and ensure our communities are better after we have served them, because mediocrity and status quo is not acceptable. I wish I had more time under Ms. Erby's tutelage, but every moment she sacrificed with me, I am forever grateful. Every pearl of wisdom she shared will be used to do what she exemplified best, serving and loving others with no expectation. Thank you, Ms. Herz- Ms. Hazel Erby. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Give me vote on this. I need a, I need. Councilwoman Webb.
I move with the adoption of resolution six.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please. Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
I might, I think I got my email in late to be a co-sponsor, so if you wouldn't mind me being added, I'd appreciate that, so aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder. Madam Chair, on resolution number six, there are seven ayes.
Resolution number six is adopted, and, uh, Councilwoman Webb, I could not have said it any better. Thank you very much for that tribute. Moving on to unfinished business.
Madam Chair, we have one more resolutions.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilwoman Harder, I'm sorry.
Resolution number seven introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Please read resolution seven, please.
Resolution, whereas, since May 4, 2021, the St. Louis County Council's Ethics Committee, the committee, has held three meetings for the purpose of investigating a potential violation of the St. Louis County Charter by County Executive Sam Page, the county executive. And whereas, section 3.010 of the St. Louis County Charter states, in relevant part, "The county executive's entire time shall be devoted to the duties of the office." And whereas, the committee is considering the question of whether the county executive has violated Charter section 3.010 in regard to his outside work as a physician on or after April 28, 2019. And whereas, it is incumbent upon this council to allow the Ethics Committee the opportunity to continue its work. And whereas, the Ethics Committee has a legitimate and authorized legislative purpose in conducting its investigation. To wit, oversight of the executive branch is an important council check on the county executive's power and a balance against his discretion in implementing and enforcing laws, such as those enumerated in the Charter and ordinances of St. Louis County. One primary way the council conducts oversight is through hearings such as the Ethics Committee. Legislative oversight is a fundamental check and balance. And whereas, in a letter communication to Councilmember Mark Harder dated May 14, 2021, the county executive stated that he occasionally engages in medical activities. See attachment one. And whereas, Mercy Hospital, Mercy is the only source of records related to the county executive's work as a physician at Mercy on or after April 28, 2019. And whereas, Western Anesthesiology Associates Incorporated, WAA, is the only source of records related to the county executive's work as a physician with or through WAA on or after April 28, 2019. And whereas, at the meeting of the committee held on May 24, 2021, the committee voted unanimously to first solicit documentation regarding dates and times of the county executive's employment since April 28, 2019, from both Mercy and WAA, and further to recommend to the council that the council approve the issuance of subpoenas to Mercy and WAA if said entities did not respond to the informal requests pursuant to the council's power under Charter section 2.190 and 102.130, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances. And whereas, by letter communication dated May 28, 2021, directed to the President and CEO of Mercy Hospital in St. Louis, Councilman Mark Harder, Chair of the Ethics Committee, Councilman Harder, requested that Mercy provide records related to work performed by the county executive at Mercy between the dates of April 30, 2019, and May 24, 2021, including dates worked, start times and end times per shift per day, and whether or not the county executive was compensated for such work, and, and well as for records related to Mercy's review process for granting, admitting, or surgical privileges as they pertain to requirements that a physician has been actively practicing medicine for a certain number of hours since the last credentialing review, and further requested that Mercy provide such records by June 11, 2021. See attachment two. And whereas, by letter communication dated May 28, 2019, directed to the President of WAA, Councilman Harder requested that WAA provide records related to any work performed by the county executive for WAA at Mercy or any other healthcare provider between the dates of April 30, 2019, and May 4- May 24, 2021, including dates worked, start times and end times per shift per day, and whether the county executive was compensated for such work, as well as records related to WAA's policy regarding whether its physicians must be actively practicing medicine for a certain number of hours per year in order to remain listed with the practice, and further requested that WAA provide such records by June 11, 2021. See attachment two. And whereas, in a communication dated June 28, 2021, to Council Chair Rida- Rida Days from Councilmember Harder, and perends, add-on 4629, Councilmember Harder stated that as of that date, Mercy had not responded to the request for records dated May 28, 2021. See attachment three. And whereas, in add-on 4629, Councilmember Harder further stated that legal counsel for WAA responded to the request for records dated May 28, 2021 by stating that Mercy would not provide the requested records at that time. See attachment two. Whereas, the council now finds that without compulsory process to Mercy and WAA, the committee is unable to conduct its investigation. And whereas, the council is now advised of the findings and recommendation of the Ethics Committee, and hereby directs that subpoenas and orders be issued to compel Mercy to attend an Ethics Committee meeting on August 3, 2021, at 1:00 PM in the St. Louis County Council Chamber located at 41 South Central, First Floor, Clayton, Missouri, 63105, and to bring all requested books and papers, said hearing to be noticed and treated as a public meeting under Chapter 610 Revised Statutes of Missouri and Chapter 114 St. Louis County Revised Ordinances. And whereas, the council is now advised of the findings and recommendation of the Ethics Committee and hereby directs that subpoenas and orders be issued to compel WAA to attend an Ethics Committee meeting on August 3, 2021, at 1:00 PM in the St. Louis County Council Chamber located at 41 South Central, First Floor, Clayton, Missouri, 63105, and to bring all requested books and papers, s- excuse me, said hearing to be noticed and treated as a public meeting under Chapter 610 Revised Statutes of Missouri and Chapter 114 St. Louis County Revised Ordinances. Now therefore be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section one, St. Louis County Council finds it as jurisdiction to investigate the conduct of the county executive because such an investigation is a subject matter entrusted to the council by law. Section two, the St. Louis County Council finds it is unable without compulsory process to conduct adequately its investigation through its designated Ethics Committee into whether County Executive Sam Page violated the Charter of St. Louis County by working as a physician on or after April 30, 2019. Section three, the St. Louis County Council hereby directs the issuance of subpoenas and orders to compel Mercy to attend an Ethics Committee hearing on August 3, 2021, at 1:00 PM in the St. Louis County Council Chamber located at 41 South Central, First Floor, Clayton, Missouri, 63105, and to bring all requested books and papers to the hearing, said hearing to be noticed and treated as a public meeting under Chapter 610 Revised Statutes of Missouri. Section four, the St. Louis County Council hereby directs the issuance of subpoenas and orders to compel WAA to attend an Ethics Committee hearing on August 3, 2021, at 1:00 PM in the St. Louis County Council Chamber located at 41 South Central, First Floor, Clayton, Missouri, 63105, and to bring all requested books and papers to the hearing, said hearing to be noticed and treated as a public meeting under Chapter 610 Revised Statutes of Missouri. Section five, the St. Louis County Council hereby directs the appropriate officer, as determined by this council, to execute its process and to arrest any person refusing to obey such subpoenas and orders.
Councilman Harder.
I move for adoption of resolution number seven.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, uh, well, I'm sorry.
If I may.
Yes.
Thank you. Before we vote on this motion, it is important that the record reflect that there is serious, indeed profound doubt that there is any legitimate basis for the issuance of these subpoenas. In addition to the absence of a lawful basis for the issuance of the subpoenas, this resolution is fraught with errors and omissions. For starters, the resolution fails to direct any specific or identified entity or individual to issue and/or serve the subpoenas. Customarily, the county councillor's office performs and arranges these tasks. The resolution fails to include authorization for the county councillor, or anyone else for that matter, to do so. As such, the resolution is deficient on its face. Secondly, more importantly, and what will ultimately prove dispositive here, despite a feckless attempt to claim oversight responsibility based on separation of powers and the council's role as a check and balance on the executive branch as the legislative purpose for the issuance of the subpoenas. The simple fact of the matter is that there is no legitimate legislative parts- purpose that can justify the issuance of the subpoenas. This is no different than the US Congress's relentless attempts to obtain copies of President Trump's and his family's personal records and tax returns. Those efforts proved fatal, and the records never produced despite the issuance of congressional subpoenas, because there was no legitimate legislative purpose justifying the subpoenas. Indeed, the United States Supreme Court expressly found so last year in the case Trump versus Missouri's USA LLP. In that decision, the Supreme Court citing prior precedent noted that, and I quote for the record, "Congress has no general power to inquire into the private affairs and compel disclosures." And quote, "There is no congressional power to expose for the sake of exposure." Similarly here, the council enjoys no such power. Finally, it is appropriate that we note and acknowledge that the council's lack of authority to issue these subpoenas without legitimate legislative purpose is the stated opinion of Hush Blackwell, the same law firm and the same lawyers that three of the four members of the Ethics Committee have retained in the past to represent them. Make no mistake, if this council passes this resolution authorizing these subpoenas, it will be creating significant financial liability and exposure on the part of the county and every council member who votes in support of the resolution. As an attorney and an officer of the court, I am duty and ethically bound to honor and uphold the law, not disregard it, which is exactly what the issuance of these subpoenas calls for. As such, I cannot and will not support this resolution, and I urge in the strongest terms possible that the rest of you do likewise. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any further comments?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman, uh, Dunaway.
I don't know how anyone on this council could have been good conscience after reading the recommendations of the county councillor's office even entertain a yes vote on this. It is an embarrassing overreach of the legislative branch's powers, and not only am I going to vote no, I want to make it very clear for the record that I strenuously oppose this action to protect myself from any future litigation that will likely result. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Further discussion? Any further discussion? Please call the roll. I'm sorry.
Madam Chair, I just have a question for clarification. Um, are we stating that our county councillor's office will not be able to help us out in this endeavor? Are they, are that's what you're saying, that they will not, as county councillors, they're supposed to represent us too, they will not be able to, uh, move matters forward with this?
And who is your question directed to?
Uh, Councilman Tracus as the attorney.
Councilman Tracus.
My statement and my position is that the resolution's failure to identify expressly and specifically who should issue the subpoenas and arrange for their service makes it, as I said, deficient on its face. Now perhaps Councilman Harder can advise us why the recommended language in the original version of the resolution was at your request deleted, which called for the county councillor's office to issue the subpoenas. So please enlighten us, your reason behind that. The reasoning behind that.
One second. Are you done, Councilman Tracus?
Yes ma'am, I am, thank you.
Councilman Harder.
The reasoning behind that is we wanted to keep our options open on this. The, the councillor's office could still issue these, and I've talked to them about it, or we can look for outside counsel, depending on if we need that in this case. So I wanted to keep the options open and not require one or the other in this resolution. I see, so then it's fair for you to.
Just one second.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
Councilman Harder, you done?
Yes. I see, so in your, um, considered opinion, it's perfectly okay for this council to authorize the retention of outside counsel to entertain what are going to be, in my, in my very confident opinion, ultimately quashed by a court and creating liability on the, on the county and all council members who vote for this resolution. That's fine with you, but with, but the simple fact of identifying the councillor's office to issue the subpoenas was not. Is that, is that a fair characterization?
Councilman Harder, you wish to answer?
I'm not an attorney like you are. Uh, I put this together with consultation with others and with others on this committee, and we felt at this point in time, since it is new in the process, that we wanted to keep our options open with this resolution.
Thank you. Any, Councilman Tracus?
So I'm curious, Councilman Harder, then can you please enlighten us as to who, um, other than on this council in the county councillor's office, you sought consultation about these subpoenas? Were there other attorneys involved that advised you, sir?
I don't think I need to answer that.
Of course you won't.
Uh, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Webb, just one second, Councilwoman Clancy, you're next.
So my concern, or what I would like to put on the table is the fact that we just allowed, we just voted so the county councillor's office will have five additional attorneys. And so if they cannot handle and help us pursue, because they are to represent all of us on this council.
Exactly right.
That is a concern of mine, because that was something that both Ms. Beth and Ms. Mickey stood before us and said that they would do.
Jack Mash, may I respond?
Councilman Tracus.
Ms. Orwick is here, I'm sure that she will confirm that in fact they were prepared in the original version of this resolution expressly and specifically call for the councillor's office to issue these subpoenas. It was at Mr. Harder's request that that language was moved.
Councilwoman Clancy.
Yes, um, I, I was thinking that initially that my no vote will speak, will speak enough, but I do feel compelled, again, after reviewing the rather lengthy and substantive legal opinion we got from our councillor's office, and then also, which was underscored by, uh, Councilman Tracus and Councilwoman Dunaway, um, that given the risk involved and the sloppiness of this resolution, I do not want to be legally liable for anything related to this if this passes, and I do feel compelled to state that for the record, um, along with my no vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilman Tracus.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I think given the extensive disagreement here with respect to the validity of this resolution and the attendant subpoenas, that the proper course is to hold a committee of the whole and be, uh, advised by the councillor's office in, in closed session the extent of the legitimacy of these subpoenas and the attendant liability that may attach if, as I suspect, they will ultimately be quashed by a court and the, uh, um, recipients of the subpoenas will look to the county to pay their attorney's fees and costs.
That would be the request of Councilwoman Harder.
At this point, I think we move forward with the, uh, with the vote.
Any further?
Uh, Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilwoman Clancy.
Yeah, I, I would like to piggyback off of Councilman Tracus's request. I think that this, this matter does warrant a committee of the whole with the councillor's office. Again, we've seen quite a bit of discussion here between members of the council tonight. Um, I'm disappointed that Councilman Harder is not able to answer some of the questions from Councilman Tracus that I think the public deserves to know, um, related to the context and gravity of what we are speaking about tonight and the implications it has. I can't in good faith, again, support this, but especially not with a further discussion from this body through a committee hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Harder, your response?
The response is that it's up to the, uh, council chair if she wants to have a committee of the whole on this. I think the resolution speaks for itself.
I'm going to yield to the, uh, council, I'm sorry, Councilman Tracus.
Just so the record's clear, Madam Chair, I want to make sure that I adequately responded to Councilwoman Webb's question regarding the councillor's office willingness and ability to issue these subpoenas. They are in fact able to do so and were intending to do so in the original version of this, uh, resolution. And as I said, that, uh, portion of the resolution was removed at Mr. Harder's request, not because the county councillor's office wasn't capable of doing it.
Any further discussion? Councilman Harder?
Uh, I please call for the, uh, vote on resolution number seven.
It has been moved and seconded, and we have a roll call. Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
No.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
No.
Councilmember Tracus.
No.
Councilmember Harder. Madam Chair, on resolution number seven, there are four ayes and three noes.
Resolution number seven is adopted. Moving on to unfinished business.
Item number one.
Please hold on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Item number two, Seventh District.
Please hold.
Hold on the order of business, and that will be the order. Thank you.
Item number three.
Hold on.
Hold on the order of business, and that will be the order. Item Number 4. Hold on the order of business, and that will be the order. Item Number 5. Today we had a hearing on Mr. James Hoffmeister, and the Committee of the Whole recommended that we approve his appointment to the Museum Zoo Board, Metropolitan Museum Board and District and Botanical Garden. I make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The appointment is approved as requested. Item Number 6, 4th District. Please hold on the order of business. So ordered? Item Number 7, 6th District.
The new liquor license be approved as requested, please.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. The liquor license is approved as requested. Moving on to new business? Yes, Madam Chair. Under new business, we have one prepared order this evening.
I move for adoption...
One moment.
Okay, I'd read order one.
Thank you. Prepared order number one in the matter of donation of various items in support of the Division of Animal Care and Control.
I move for adoption of order number one.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Order number one is adopted. Is that it? Yes ma'am. All right. Any further business to come before this body?
Motion to adjourn.
Saying done. Motion to adjourn. Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Good evening. Meeting adjourned.